Clerk, roll call has been taken.
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move to for adoption of the agenda.
So moved, your honor.
Motion been made by Mr. Barrington, seconded by Zog. Any additions or corrections? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Approval of January 11th, 2022 minutes and January 25th, 2022 special committee of the whole meeting minutes.
So moved, your honor.
I'm second.
Motion been made by Mr. Barrington, seconded by Mr. Haas. Any additions or corrections to those? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Move on to authorization of paying the bills, Mr. Dorsey.
Yes, your honor. Make a motion for authorization to pay bills in the amount of one million, one hundred seventy-eight thousand, four hundred thirty-one dollars and seventy-nine cents.
Second.
Motion been made by Mr. Dorsey, seconded by Mr. Herdy, Herter, to pay the bills in one million, one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, four hundred and thirty-one dollars and seventy-nine cents. Any additions or corrections to that? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried by all. Next on the agenda is public comment. Mr. Zog.
Mr. Mayor, I just thought I'd bring this up, but we lost a long-serving citizen who was in London recently, and John Robert. He served many years in the city council and also as mayor. And I just think we should recognize him and...
Thank you, Mr. Zog.
So forth.
Any other public comment? No public comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to special request from Melissa Mulroy and the Shamrock Club.
I knew him as John O'Ronberg. Hello from the Shamrock Club. Thank you for putting me on the agenda. I gave each of you the schedule of events sponsored by the club, and we hope that you plan to participate in as many of the events as you can. They're all family-oriented and free. I also gave each of you a button with this year's theme, "We Are Better Together." The theme was suggested by former Irish Rose Terry Murphy. She expressed the thought that with the tense political era at present, as well as COVID being an ongoing illness, there is comfort in believing that we are better together. Speaking of our parade royalty, I'd like to announce this year's Irish Rose is Jane Wilson, and Irish man is Lamar Wilson. The parade grand marshal is someone with whom you are all familiar, and for many years, he filmed this very meeting. You guessed it, DJ Dick Johnson will be returning from Florida to head up our parade this year. Please take another look at the button. There are some words at the bottom that look a little strange, and that's because they are Gaelic, the traditional language of the Irish people. Several years ago, the Shamrock Club teamed up with the city of New London to procure a sister city in Ireland. We joined with Killaloo in County Clare. A lovely fellow, Tony O'Brien, traveled here to view our city, meet with you, those of you that were on the council at that time, and some of us have been able to do likewise. We showed him the Wolf River, and he showed us the River Shannon. When it became a fact that no one in the club could pronounce the words in Gaelic, I spoke with Tony. He gave me the following pronunciation. If you look at the words at the bottom, ta imid nis far le kela. Try it with me slowly. So the first part is, that first word that you see is ta imid. Ta imid. And then the next one looks like noise, it's nis.
Nis.
Far.
Far.
Le.
Le.
Kela.
Kela.
Okay, that was pretty good.
So what does that mean?
It means we are better together. I may sound like a broken record, but every time that I think about the many privileges we have in our country, I'm really proud to be an American. Here we feel at ease recognizing the melting pot that we are and even celebrating each other's heritage. We'll be doing that in fine style, beginning on March 14th. And so the reason for my being here. We hope to have you grant us the legal permission to again change our name from New London to New Dublin for the dates March 14th to March 20, 2022. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Melissa. Looking for a motion today?
Your honor, I move that we allow them to change the name from New Dublin to New Dublin.
Second.
Motion been made by Mr. Barrington, seconded by Mr. Zog, to change the names of the city of New London to New Dublin from the week of March 14th. Any other discussion? Please cast your ballots. John, one more time. Motion carried by all.
Thank you.
And thank you for your time, and we're looking forward to getting back to the parade.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Yeah, good evening. All right, moving on to standing and special committees. We'll start off with the Board of Public Works, Mr. Barrington.
Thank you, your honor. Board of Public Works, met on Monday, January 31st, 2022. Members present: Barrington, Zog, Herter, Dorsey, Ritchie. Council members: Besaw, Roberts, Haas. Meeting was called to order at 5:15. Motion to approve the agenda, motion carried by all. Public comment relative to items on the agenda. Adam Dober shared thoughts and suggestions to the consideration of a citywide residential waste collection. That will be looked at in the future a little bit. Waste water treatment plant facility update, everything looks pretty normal down there. The next was discuss a request to consider citywide residential solid waste collection contract. David Pinnell submitted a written request that the city consider a citywide solid waste contract. Mr. Herth explained that this proposal would change the way residential property pays for garbage collection, but would not affect commercial properties or multiple family residential units. The city could request proposals from contractors for single residential collection contract instead of residents finding and paying directly for their own service. The board did like the idea of researching an option for a citywide large item pickup day and directed the staff to look into that opportunity, but did not feel it was a benefit to consider a citywide collection contract at this time. Motion was made to consider, to deny the request to consider, motion carried by all. The next item was to approve a contract with DTAK for brush disposal. Excuse me. A 2022 contract with DTAK for disposing brush and wood products was reviewed by the board. This contract would continue those services from 2021. Motion made and seconded to approve the contract with DTAC LLC for 2022 calendar year to dispose of brush and wood debris in the amount of $12,000. Motion carried by all, that will be brought to council tonight. The next was to renew an agreement with McManus and Associates for general engineering services. The board reviewed an annual engineering agreement for McManus and Associates for engineering services that generally have a scope of less than $5,000. Engineering projects over $5,000 will have a specific agreement defining the exact scope of services and costs for the project. Motion made and seconded, carried by all, that will be brought up to council tonight. The next thing, directors' report, none presented. Future agenda items, second reading of CDBG street projects for Avon Lime &amp; Lion. One-year renewal, review of municipal code 9.49 for all-terrain utility vehicles. No further business, the meeting was adjourned at 6 o'clock. I bring to council tonight to approve a contract for DTAK for brush disposal for 2022 in the amount of $12,000.
Second.
Motion been made by Mr. Barrington and seconded by Mr. Dorsey for the approval of the DTAC contract for brush removal for 2022. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried by all.
I make a motion to review an agreement with McManus and Associates for general engineering services with a scope of less than $5,000. Anything above that will have to be...
Second.
...taken care of and voted on.
Motion been made by Mr. Barrington, seconded by Mr. Zog. Any further discussion on that? Please cast your ballots. Motion's carried by all.
And that is all I have to make, your honor.
Thank you, Mr. Barrington. Move on to finance and personnel, Mr. Dorsey.
Thank you, your honor. Finance and Personnel Committee met Wednesday, February 2nd at 5:15. Members present: Dorsey, Fache, Barrington, Roberts, Besaw. Also present: Mayor Mark Herter, Zog, Ritchie, Governor Dennis Herter, John Haas, and Steve Groth. City Administrator Chad Horrith, Police Chief Schlitter, City Clerk Nicole Lemke, Director of Parks and Recreation Ginger Arnt, Finance Director Julie Radke, Judy Radke, sorry, Library Director Anne Hunt, Interim Director of Public Works, Macamans, Missy Camptons, Avenue and Electronic Media Specialists, and Lori Shaw from the Cemetery Commission. The meeting was called to order at 5:15. Motion made by Barrington, seconded by Besaw to approve the amended agenda. Horrith was called upon to lead a discussion on a proposed amendment to the East Central Regional Planning Commission's bylaws. Horrith explained the counties have already passed a resolution supporting the amendments, which are mainly on how the Board of Directors are selected. Besaw and Barrington to recommend the council the resolution to amend the Articles of Organization and the bylaws of the East Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission. Horrith presented a contract with Corals &amp; Brady LLP to create development agreement with Titan Industries, TID 6. Barrington asked if a new TID had been created. Horrith explained the developer's agreement creation is just a preliminary step, and at a joint review board, will need to come together. Project plans will need to be developed, and council will need to approve. Fache and Roberts to approve contract with Corals &amp; Brady LLP to create development agreement. Radke presented TID termination resolution. Barrington and Roberts to pass TID termination resolution. Radke presented the 2021 year-end expenditures. Radke explained that these are estimate and, excuse me, unaudited figures. Radke went through each expense category in detail. Radke explained many categories were under budget due to staffing vacancies. In total, the city was under budget by $430,632.23. Radke then compared the expected 8.7 million and actual 8.9 million year-end revenues. She stated the police department's higher-than-expected revenues are because they had received a few grants. $189,583 in revenue plus the expenditure savings equaled $562,967. Radke explained capital maintenance, cable, bolt launch, and retirement reserve need to be accounted for separately, but recommended to the committee to allocate the remaining $404,826 as follows. $350,000 to the capital fund, $30,000 to the economic development, and to save $25,000 towards future revaluation. Horrith asked the cost for revaluation. Radke explained the last time the cost was $80,000, and that $25,000 would be a portion of the cost. Finance Director Radke reviewed monthly financial reports. She highlighted that she needed to estimate the wheel tax for December, but the city had since received the wheel tax check, and the actual amount was $130,441. Radke said since 2001, when they passed the original budget, they have needed to shift the category of some funds, but the total money is still the same. Radke stated the city is required by state statute to update this by resolution. Barrington and Besaw to pass the resolution to amend the 2021 budget. Radke also explained that they are required for the audit to designate fund balances. Besaw and Fache to recommend the council a resolution aligning the fund balance. Financial Director's report was discussed. There being no public comment or further business, motion was made by Besaw and seconded by Roberts to adjourn at 6:13. The next regulatory schedule, Finance Committee meeting will be held in the council chambers on March 2nd at 5:15. I bring the council, make a motion to approve the license list as presented.
Second.
It's been made by Mr. Dorsey, seconded by Mr. Barrington for approval of license list. Any additions or corrections? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
So make a motion for a resolution to amend the Articles of Organization and the bylaws of the East Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission.
Second.
Motion been made by Mr. Dorsey and seconded by Mr. Zog for resolution to amend the Articles of Organization and the bylaws of East Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission. Any additions or corrections? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried by all.
Also like to consider contracting with Corals &amp; Brady LLP to create a development agreement with Titan Industries, TID 6.
Second.
Motion been made by Mr. Dorsey, and any catch who seconded that?
John.
Mr. Fache, seconded by Mr. Fache, to consider contract with Cory's and...
Brady.
Cory's and Brady LLP to create development agreements with Titan Industries. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. That motion's carried 10-0.
Consider a tax incremental district ER TID termination resolution.
Second.
Motion been made by Ms. Dorsey and seconded by Mr. Barrington to consider tax incremental district ER TID termination resolution. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried 10-0.
Resolution to amend the 2021 budget.
Second.
Motion been made by Mr. Dorsey and seconded by Mr. Haas. Correct? Resolution to amend 2021 budget. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried 10-0.
Resolution assigning the fund balance for the year end, 12/31/2021.
Second.
Motion been made by Mr. Dorsey and seconded by Mr. Zog for resolution assigning fund balance for year end, 12/31/2021. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. That motion is also carried 10-0.
That is all I have, your honor.
Thank you, Mr. Dorsey. Move on to Parks and Recreation, Mr. Besaw.
Thank you, your honor. Park and Rec Committee met on Tuesday, February 1st. Committee members present were Besaw, Fache, Zog, Ritchie, and Groth, Rachel Schuler. Council members present were Mayor Mark Herter, John Haas, Mike Barrington, Dave Dorsey, Tim Roberts, and Dennis Herter. Others present were Chad Hurth, City Administrator, Ginger Art, Director of Parks and Recreation, Michelle Lambrecht, Public Service Assistant, Administrative Assistant, Craig Shue and Matthew Litchfield from Aries and Associates, Scott Black and Joe Marquardt, School District of New London. The meeting was called to order at 5:15. Motion was carried by all. Public comment relevant to items on the agenda, there was none presented. The second public citizen participation hearing on community development block grants, CDBG. Craig Shue and Matthew Litchfield from Aries and Associates led a citizen public participation hearing regarding the progress and updates to the project. Items discussed included introductions and purposes of the hearing, updates to Newton Blackmore State Trail Extension, activities completed, remaining activities to complete with estimated completion timeframe, housing needs identified in the New London community, questions and input to project activities. The CDBG hearing gives citizens and committee members the opportunity to provide input and discuss the project and housing needs in the New London community. No motion was made at this time. Tennis court partnership with the School District of New London. Scott Black and Joe Marquardt from the School District of New London led a presentation on plans of constructing a tennis complex at the London High School campus. The school district would like to partner with the city of New London on the construction of an eight-court tennis complex. The city currently has three locations with tennis courts at Abraham, Pfeiffer, and Hatton Parks, all of which need upkeep and resurfacing in the near future. There will be a committee forum that will comprise the members of the city council and school district facility committee. No motion was made at this time. Review special events policy and adopt changes. Ginger Arnt presented changes and edits to the special events policy applications. Suggestions changed included deadlines, street closure explanation, free schedule with late fees, two-step approval process with a proof of compliance checklist. That will come to council for approval. Zog and Ritchie move that council approve the updated special events policy. Motion was carried by all. 2021 Annual Report, the committee reviewed the 2021 City of New London Park and Recreation Public Works Annual Report. Director's write-important memo, the director's memo was included in an agenda packet and reviewed by the committee. Chairman's report, Besaw thanked all the city staff and all their hard work, and the job well done. Committee members report, there was none presented. Future agenda items, the Veterans Memorial Plan for Taft Park, revisit tennis court partnership with the School District of New London, contract for Wapaka County Meal Service at the Washington Center. There being no further discussion, Zog made a motion, Fache second, moved to adjourn at 6:40. Motion was carried. I would ask for council's approval for the review and special events policy and adopt changes.
Motion been made by Mr. Besaw, seconded by Mr. Ritchie for the event policy changes and adopt changes. Any further discussion on that? Please cast your ballots. Mr. Dorsey. Motion carried. By all.
That's all I have, your honor.
Thank you, Mr. Besaw. Follow it up with the Planning Commission, would you please?
Thank you. Planning Commission met on Thursday, January 27th. Those in attendance were Chairman Besaw, Donna Gabbert, Mayor Mark Herter, Susie Steingraber, and Jamie Walbrook. Others in attendance, City Administrator Chad Hurth, Building Inspector and Zoning Administrator David Vincent, Dave Dorsey, Tim Roberts, John Haas, and representing Cedar Corporation, Eric Fowle. The meeting was called to order at 5:15. A motion was made by Gabbert to adopt the agenda and seconded by Steingraber. Motion was carried by all. The December 27th, 2021 meetings were reviewed, and a motion was made to accept the minutes by Gabbert and seconded by Steingraber. Motion was carried by all. Eric Fowle from Cedar Corporation updated the commission on the comprehensive plan use proposal. Some interaction and dialogue from the members present were discussed, but the consensus was to move the document forward for the public hearing for comments before deciding on creating a resolution to the council for a recommendation for adoption. Cedar Corporation will continue to move the project forward and will plan on attending a future meeting to discuss and to provide progress. The next item on the agenda was to further discuss possible adoption with amendments for the 2015 IPMC International Property Maintenance Code. It was agreed to have the zoning administrator bring forward the language he believes is necessary for amendments and/or deletions of the final document for consideration. A motion was made to adjourn by Gabbert, seconded by Steingraber, carried by all. Meeting adjourned at 6:02. That's all I have, your honor.
Thank you, Mr. Besaw. Move on to economic development, Mr. Dorsey.
Thank you, your honor. The New London Economic Development Committee meeting met Tuesday, January 25th, 2022. Members present were Dorsey, Bishop, Fache, Kapitsky, Thompson, Wolf, Zog, and Haas. Excused, was later. Others present: Mayor Mark Herter, Tim Roberts, Paul Besaw, Steve Groth, Bernie Ritchie, City Administrator Chad Horrith, Jeff Hanskey, Josh Viste, Anne Hunt, Christine Cross, and Jeanne Schleisch. Meeting was called to order at 5:17. Kapitsky and Zog approved the agenda. November 30th, 2021 meeting minutes were reviewed and approved by Zog Kapitsky. To kick off the new year, the committee held introduction for new members and older persons. Each individual introduced themselves and provided examples of how they would like to see New London advance in economic development sense within the next five years. Many members focused on the 2024 downtown reconstruction project and continued efforts to attract new businesses, but not forget supporting the existing ones. John Fache brought to the committee's attention a talent development conference sponsored by the Wisconsin Workforce Development Association on April 7th and 8th. Focus of this year's conference is dealing with worker shortages in Wisconsin. Several members expressed interest in attending. Horrith introduced Josh Viste, the city's new video and marketing producer, and talked about some branding ideals that Viste, Kapitsky, Park and Rec Director Ginger Arnt, and he have been thinking about to market the city. The slogan and marketing campaign would illustrate and show why New London is the address for great shopping, dining, business opportunities, as well as a great place to live. Staff will work on video and digital marketing ideals and report back to the committee with some concepts. Chambers Director Business Report. Business updates. BOSS Optimal, a business assistant and consulting company, opened a new office at N. 3762 County Trump T. Family Flippers opened a new pallet flipping store at 1200 North Shawno Street, Street 4. A new wedding and event planning business opened at 307 West Northwater Street and had its ribbon cutting on February 3rd. Alpachan Mexican Restaurant opened at 203 North Shawno Street. Fox Valley Trailers opened at 1200 North Shawno Street. Et Simon Store for Kiru LLC opened at 304 West Northwater Street. Wolf River Propane opened a new office location at 315 Burton Road. Beacon Street Deli has new owners, is now called Emily's Cafe, that's at 422 East Beacon Avenue. MK Flooring is relocating the old Dollar General store at 105 Henry Street. Bozy and Sweet Pop-Up Candy Shop will be closing in the end of summer of 2022. Boom Boom Bokeh at 1923 North Shawno Street is closing... Boom Boom Bokeh at nineteen twenty-three North Shawno Street is closing a retail store and reopening as a hair salon. The Chamber and City continue to promote the Main Street Bounce Back Grant and know of at least five businesses in London that have received the grant. City Administrators Report. Staff has been working on potential development of a TIT six in the southeast portion of the city to assist some local business development. More information will be presented as staff work on a proposal with the business near that location. Hirth also answered committee member questions on the status of other recently formed TID districts. Downtown waterfront property, downtown river alley, and the twenty twenty-four downtown reconstruction project. Committee reviewed speaker and agenda items for future meetings. There being no public input. Zog and Hass moved to adjourn at six seventeen. The next committee meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, February twenty-second, twenty twenty-two, at five fifteen. Let's have the WCEDC January report as presented. And that is all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Dorsey. And next we have Capital Equipment and Projects Committee. Mr. Beesaw.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Capital Committee and Projects Committee met on Wednesday, February second. Members present were Beesaw, Dorsey, Fache, Barrington, Roberts, Mayor Mark Herter, Red Zog, Bernie Ritchie, Dennis Herter, John Hass, Steve Groot. Also present were City Administrator Chad Hirth, Police Chief Schleeter, City Clerk Nicole Lemke, Director of Parks and Rec Ginger Art, Financial Director Judy Radke, Library Director Ann Hunt, Interim Director of Public Works Luke Hammond, Missy Kempin, and Laurie Shaw Cemetery Commission. The meeting was called order at six twenty-one. Adopted the agenda, ten no. Radke was called upon to lead a discussion on the proposed capital equipment projects purchases. Radke explained department heads meet in advance of the meeting to discuss these purchases and were asked to attend this meeting to answer questions about the purchases as they were knowledgeable about the needs or as they were knowledgeable about the needs and the purchases. Radke highlighted the addition of thirty-three thousand five hundred and fifteen from the sale of equipment and noted that the three hundred and fifty thousand that flowed into capital projects from the twenty twenty-one year and revenues and expenditures is not something they anticipate happening again. Hammond and Hirth explained the need to replace pickup truck facilities number three sixty, it's a two thousand and three, was because they tried to phase out trucks after fifteen years and the truck is eighteen years old and has a considerable amount of rust. Motion was approved for replacement of the pickup truck facilities number three sixty, two oh three, for a price of twenty-five thousand five hundred. Motion was carried. Hammond said the one-ton dump truck, Parks number three oh one, a two oh six, is being requested for a replacement due to age and wear and tear. Barrington asked the make and what they would be purchasing. Hammond stated the current model was a Ford and that they had a quote for block for a Chevrolet. Hirth explained Hammond's would be responsible for getting bids and that the motion was just to prove the budget, not a specific make and model. Dorsey confirmed the city would sell or trade in the existing equipment. Zog and Dorsey to approve the replacement of the one-ton dump truck, Parks number three oh one, two thousand and six, for forty-two thousand five hundred. Roberts asked if they would be purchasing a new vehicle. Hirth confirmed. Hass asked if they would get multiple bids. Hirth confirmed Hammond's would be getting multiple bids. Motion carried, ten oh. Art stated the groomer trailer, for the ball diamonds, was quite old, but that she felt the trailer would likely be replaced under the under the seven thousand eight hundred dollar budget. Barrington and Fache to replace the groomer trailer. Carried ten oh. Lemke stated the budget request for a Badger's book for electronic election registration for twenty-three thousand three hundred and ninety was static because the Badger book is the only electronic poll book authorized by Wisconsin Elections Commission. Lemke was asked about other communities across the state that use it and stated that Clintonville has them and offer to facilitate. Council observed their use. Roberts voiced his concern about the cost and their susceptibility to fraud and stated he wants to just use paper. Lemke stated the Badger book communicate to each other but are not connected to any network outside of the polling place. The poll book can still be printed on paper and that there has not been evidence of fraud with this use. Zog, Dorsey to budget to pass it for twenty-three thousand three hundred and ninety for the purchase of the Badger book. Motion was carried by nine. Roberts against. Chief Schleeter stated the police department has been pleased with the department's experience with body cameras. He said in twenty thirteen, the officers had requested the cameras from management. Motion was made by Zog, seconded by Mayor Herter for forty thousand dollars for new police body cameras. Motion was carried by all. Ritchie explained the fire department's nine thousand dollar budget for a new washer extractor was to wash contaminants out of fire suits after use. Hirth added the current machine is dated and can only process one suit at a time. Motion was carried to authorize the budget for nine thousand dollars for a new washer extractor for the fire department. Motion was carried by all. Ritchie abstained. Hirth explained his request for the culvert replacement on Spur Road split cost with the Town of Liberty. Hirth stated that he confirmed with the new chairman at the Town of Liberty that they are still interested in splitting the cost, but that Outagamee County was unable to update their quote because of the fluctuation cost of supplies. Motion was made by Zog and seconded by Roberts for five thousand dollars for culvert replacement for Spur Road. Motion was carried, ten oh. The replacement of three park shelter roofs was discussed. Abraham, Sled Hill, and Riverside. Dorsey and Barrington made the motion and seconded to replace the roofs for six thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars. Roberts asked the age of the roofs. Hirth said he didn't know the exact age, but Fache said some of those roofs are peeling off and require replacement. Ritchie asked if steel was considered. Hirth said Art can research that. The motion was carried, ten oh. Art asked for five thousand seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars to replace a treadmill and five thousand seven hundred and sixteen to replace a diving board at the Aquatic and Fitness Center. She said the treadmill is their heaviest used piece of equipment and that they are currently without it. Art said the current diving board is as old as the pool and is too old to hold grip and that they have had five slips and falls this past summer. Zog made the motion, Fache second, to replace both the cardiac equipment and the diving board for a cost of nine thousand five hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Motion was carried by all. Art stated the request for an ice rink liner for four thousand eight hundred and twenty-one dollars would enable the city to have the ice rink even in years where the ground wasn't cold enough to freeze ice on top of it. She said Hortonville, as well as other majority of and other majority of communities in Wisconsin has either ice rink liner from the same company. Dorsey asked where a link rink would be located in New London, and Art said the area by the sled hill. Boat overflow parking was flat and would allow the warming shelter to be used with it. Mayor Herter endorsed Dorsey to approve the purchase of the ice rink liner. Motion carried by all. Art stated the request for four thousand eight hundred and twenty-one for refurbishing Hatton wall was for the portion of the most visible sections of the wall. The largest section being on Werner Allen. Motion by Zog, seconded by Roberts to approve four thousand eight hundred and twenty-one for refurbishing of the Hatton wall. Motion was carried, ten oh. Hirth explained the six thousand dollar request for the tree removal stump grinder at Flora Hill Cemetery was less than earlier estimates because work would be done in-house. Motion was married by Barrington, seconded by Dorsey to approve the tree removal stump grinding. Motion was carried by all. The request for software for the building inspection program from V S and A was discussed. Building Inspector Dave Vincent was not present to answer questions about the software he was requesting. Hirth explained Vincent was requesting the software program which would track department information, code violations, fire inspections, permit applications, et cetera, and store historical information by parcel. Hirth said Vincent had used the software while working in Michigan. Fache stated that this would streamline processes for the department by generating letters, et cetera. Roberts voiced concern about the cost, especially for a smaller community. Motion was made by Zog and seconded by Fache to end discussion and move to voting. Motion was carried, ten oh. Fache made the motion, Zog to the budget for the book for twenty-eight thousand five hundred and thirty to purchase the V S and A software. Motion carried, nine one. Roberts against. Dorsey and Barrington to fund comprehensive plan update for twenty-four thousand eight hundred. Motion carried, ten oh. Kemp explained the IT security assessment budget. Kempin said this would be a deep scan into the system for problems. It would also scan for both of the city's domains in the dark web. She said the cost for this had doubled from the past, but the SIBMC would pay half of the cost. Zog made the motion, Mayor Herter, to fund four thousand one hundred and forty for IT security assessment. Motion was carried by all. Hirth explained the staffing compensation study request would help attracting and retaining staff. Dorsey made the motion, Roberts second, to approve the study for thirteen thousand five hundred dollars. Motion was carried by all. Hunt stated the children's area carpet replacement for the library included replacement of carpet as well as asbestos removal and air clearance testing. Zog made the motion, Fache seconded, to budget eleven thousand five hundred and sixty-three dollars for the library children's area flooring replacement and asbestos remediation. Motion was carried by all. Radke suggested a meeting not to be scheduled at this time, rather one be scheduled if necessary. There being no public comment on further business. The motion was made by Zog and seconded by Dorsey to adjourn at seven fifteen. I would ask council for approval of adopting the twenty twenty-two capital program in the amount of three hundred and eight thousand three hundred and thirty-four dollars.
Second. Motion been made by Mr. Beesaw, seconded by Mr. Zog to adopt the twenty twenty-two capital program in the amount of three hundred and eight thousand dollars, three, three hundred and eight thousand three hundred and thirty-four dollars. Any additions or corrections?
I have a question. Under the pool, the diving board and checkbook said nine thousand seven hundred dollars. When you add them two numbers up, it comes out to eleven thousand five hundred and fifteen. I don't know if that matters. Just in the minutes.
If I recall at the meeting, you didn't approve the nine hundred, nine thousand five hundred and ninety-nine. You approved the two purchases.
So in the minutes, then.
So we'll have to amend.
Eleven thousand five hundred and fifteen, because that's the two numbers I have to.
Correct.
The five seven nine nine and the five seven one six.
Another thing in the minutes, it said the Hatton wall was four thousand nine hundred and eighty-something. It was forty-four thousand?
Yeah. That one's wrong.
We know they're all approved, it's just a matter of making sure.
The numbers are right?
Correct.
So we're still looking for the approval of the capital project, which should be the
But a correction on the minutes.
With the correction.
Those two figures.
The minutes. I'm assuming the total amount on the agenda is correct, then? Because that came from Judy, I believe, right?
Judy and I reviewed those together, yeah. What is the?
Yeah. So the the total amount, if you look at that whole budget of three hundred and eight thousand three hundred and thirty-four, that should be correct. So there's two typos basically in the minutes. The forty-four thousand for the wall and then the addition of the two pool items.
Yep. So the the figure of the three hundred and eight thousand three hundred and thirty-four, that comes from the forty-four thousand for the Hatton wall refurbishing and the five thousand seven ninety-nine for the cardio and five thousand seven hundred and sixteen for the diving board. So that figure is correct and I'll correct the minutes.
So the amount we're asking for approval is right?
Yes. Correct. Okay. There's two typos in the minutes.
Okay. So I've looked for approval with the typos that are being corrected in the minutes.
Second again.
For approval of the three hundred and eight thousand three hundred and thirty-four dollars.
Motion been made by Mr. Beesaw, seconded by Mr. Zog with the additions and corrections to the three hundred and eight thousand three hundred and thirty-four dollars. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried, ten zero.
That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Beesaw. All right. Uh, move on to minutes and reports, will they all stand as read in your packets? Keep moving along to reports of officers and recent events and announcements to the public. I'll start out the mayor's report. We have a resolution. A resolution supporting world migratory birds. Whereas migratory birds are some of the most beautiful and easily observed wildlife that share our communities. And whereas many citizens recognize and welcome migratory songbirds as symbolic hair bearers of spring. And whereas these migrant species also play an important economic role in our community controlling insects, pests, and generating millions in recreational dollars statewide. And whereas public awareness and concern are crucial components of migratory bird conservations. And whereas since nineteen ninety-three, World Migratory Bird Day has become a primary vehicle for focusing public attention on the nearly three hundred and fifty species that travel between nesting habitats in our communities and throughout North America and their wintering grounds in South and Central America, Mexico and the Caribbean, and the Southern U.S. And whereas while World Migratory Bird Day officially is held each year on the second Saturday in May, it is, its observance is not limited to a single day. Planners are encouraged to schedule activities on the dates best suited to the presence of both migrants and celebrants. And whereas World Migratory Bird Day is not only a day to foster appreciation for wild birds and to celebrate and support migratory birds' conservations, but also call to action. Now therefore, I'm Mark Herter, as mayor of the City of New London of Wisconsin. Do hereby proclaim Saturday, May seventh, twenty twenty-two, as World Migratory Bird Day in the City of New London, and I urge all citizens to celebrate this observance and to support efforts to protect and conserve migratory birds and their habitats in our community and the world at large. Thank you. And that is all I have for my report.
We need a motion on that as a resolution.
We need a motion and a You make the motion, Zog? I cannot make the motion.
I'll make a motion supporting World Migratory Bird Day Resolution, as read by the mayor.
Mr. Fache makes the motion. Mr. Zog seconds the motion. Any further discussion on that one? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried, ten zero. Thank you, Fred. All right, moving on to the City Administrator, Mr. Hirth.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, I've got some department heads that are out today, so I'm going to help them out with some reports. First on the Park and Rec side, reminder that the annual daddy-daughter dance is scheduled for February eighteenth at five PM at the Washington Center Gym. Regular registration is on right now through February eleventh. After that, a late fee of five dollars will kick in. Um, before February eleventh, we will mail you your tickets if you buy them online or call us up or in the office. Otherwise, after eleventh, you will be required to come into the office and pay for them. So we've been talking to Morgan about that. Sounds like a very popular event. What did you tell me, a hundred and fifty people roughly? Hundred and fifty kids?
Side of registration, um, probably a hundred and thirty total.
So it looks like it'd be a very popular event with some time for registration yet. The Public Works side, uh, let's see. We've received some questions regarding the future Avon, Lima, and Lion Street projects coming up this summer. We don't have final plans for them yet. Our engineers are still finishing up their investigation, cost estimates, and the design. Um, and once they have that figured out, then we can really figure out how far those funds will go with the street resurfacing project. So hopefully in the next month, we have some more concrete information. Once we do have that information, we'll post it on the city's website. You can find that on the project page on the city's public works. You can find that on the project page on the city's public works site by going to the public works site, and then there's a projects tab. Otherwise, you can simply type in www新LondonWI.org/projects, and that'll come up with all the projects that we have planned for the public works site. We're also still looking for our next park, public works director. The position is currently open. We're accepting applications. Where the applications will close on this Sunday, February thirteenth. So if anyone knows of someone who is qualified and interested in this position, please have them check it out on the city's webpage. And then lastly, with the council passing the resolution tonight, assigning the fund balance for year end earlier in the meeting, that does now fund our annual downtown facade improvement program for two thousand and twenty-two. So if there are any downtown businesses looking for facade improvements for this year, you may be eligible for up to a two thousand dollar matching grant. Details on the program can be found on the city's website under the business tab and economic development page. Just a reminder that projects do need to be approved in advance before construction begins. So if you have any questions, you can either go to the website or call me in the office, and I'll be more than happy to help you out. Thank you much.
Thank you, Mr. Herter. Move on to the utility manager, Mr. Besett.
Thank you, Your Honor. Last week, we notified our winter run customers to turn their water on due to the frost being four feet in the roadway. On January nineteenth, we had a water main break at Cameron and Pearl Street. Our crews made that repair. On January twenty-second, at six P.M., we received a call from the Rainbow Motel. They had an electric problem. Crews responded, found that out to be customers' equipment. On January twenty-sixth, we had a car strike, a fire hydrant on Becker Road. On January twenty-seventh, our crews were called. They responded to a service stub leaking out at the North Industrial Park Tower. Our crews made that repair that same day. On January thirty-first, at nine thirty, we responded to a broke-off pole at two oh seven East Wolf River Road. That pole was identified and owned by AT&amp;T. Water crews today made a repair at three sixteen East Pine Street for a service lateral leaking on the utility side, and I'd like the utilities to remind our customers that we do not support or discourage the services from HomeServe USA selling water lateral insurance. A lot of people have been receiving mailings for this type of service. We just ask that our customers check their homeowners' insurance and see if they're already covered. And then I'd also like to recognize Jackie Leva for eight years of service with the utilities. That's all I have this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Besett, and thank you for your service as well. All right. Mr. Schleder is not here today. He's away on business, so we'll skip him. The interim director of public works was already taken by Mr. Herth, as well as the Parks and Recreation. So that leaves us with the fire chief, Mr. Wolf.
Thank you, Your Honor. All I have tonight is some service anniversaries. Excuse me. Bernie Ritchie, thirty-seven years. Greg Stylen, thirty-two years. Joe Kuzmiczuk, eighteen years. Brian Ritchie, ten years. All have thanks.
Thank you, and thank all of them for their service as well. Move on to the clerk.
In-person absentee, or in-person voting is going on, early voting in the clerk's office until Friday. Voters can come in from seven thirty to four thirty Wednesday and Thursday, and on Friday from seven thirty A.M. until eleven thirty A.M. The spring primary will be next Tuesday, February fifteenth. Polls are open across the state from seven A.M. until eight P.M. And if council is interested in observing the use of Badger Books, Clintonville, the clerk at Clintonville has extended an offer for you all to visit and observe the Badger Books in use and ask their election inspectors about their experience, especially with this spring primary election, which is in a very, an election with lower participation, so you would have an opportunity. So if you're interested in that, just let me know. And that's all I have, sir.
Thank you, clerk. And moving on. Other comment? With none being said, let's all for adjournment. Motion adjourned, Your Honor. Motion been made by Mr. Barrington, seconded by Mr. Ritchie. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Most? Motion carried by all. We are adjourned.